All right. Good morning, everybody. This is 9:05 a.m., October 15th. We are here at a special meeting and hearing to present our preliminary budget for the county, starting a little bit late here. But we are all ready to go in the room with me. I have our clerk Patty Berger, Hannah Waugh, Crystal Hewlett, and Commissioner Fiedler. And we are recording this on Zoom as well. And our soon-to-be-starting county manager has joined us. Welcome, Tim. Really appreciate you taking the time. All right. And with that, as many folks might know, October is our mid-October is typically our deadline to post our preliminary budget. The budget does typically change from October through our final, through approving our final budget. And so there are, this is not perfect. And there will be changes made to the budget that we have been working on. And with that, I think I will hand it over to either Commissioner Marcela or Crystal to give us a brief overview. I'm sorry, I apologize. I cannot, I don't have video or audio, so I apologize. You guys kind of get what you get unless you want me to jump, play musical chips.
You're good.
Crystal, if you want to want to start and go ahead, and then I can just jump in with anything that we talked about yesterday. That's great.
Sure. So I had emailed you all a copy of the preliminary budget. I have also printed it out and have given the clerk Patty Berger a copy as well to have available in her office. I will also, once we get done with the meeting, I will also post it on the Lake County Government website under the Finance Department. In the Budget section, it'll be posted as a 2022 preliminary budget. So folks will be able to access it online as well. So with that, I have handed the commissioners a copy of the fund balance sheet. So this is the summary sheet from the, from the front of the budget. Patty does have copies of the revenues as well as the expenditures. Okay. For the 2022 preliminary budget, we have set the mills at the max level of 41.999, which gives us an estimated property tax revenue of $9,484,668. This is based on the assessors preliminary certification of values dated August 23rd, 2021. The allocation at this point is set to go between the general fund at 34.514 mills, human services at 0.965 mills, the ambulance fund at 3.32 mills, cap acquisition fund at one mill, and the insurance fund at 2.2 mills. We have continued to see a trend in sales tax increases every month through this past year. For the 2022, we have estimated revenue at 2.8 million. I will continue to evaluate this every month as more data continues to to come in with the tax collections we will see in November and early December and make any adjustments on that as we see fit. Expenditures, some of the big ones I wanted to point out to you this morning is the addition to, the additions to general funds. We have some new departments or divisions with the introduction of a county manager. We've added that division. It is a division that will sit under the county commissioners. And we will receive, in this first year with the county manager, we will receive 75% of the salary plus benefits through a DOLA grant to help offset some of those expenditures. I believe next year it's 50%, and then the following year it goes down to 25%. So we will see some revenue to offset that. I've also created a division under the commissioners as well for the Justice Center. So you will see that in the expenditures on the line by line that I've given Patty. With that, we have included estimated expenditures at this time of roughly 4 million. Again, these are all under the general fund. We will include a division for the housing department or a new department. I haven't set that one up yet, but we will, it may be a division that will sit under the commissioners. We haven't quite determined that. Right now, I do have $80,000 in expenditures sitting in Commissioner Other just as a holding place until we figure out how to break that out. So that was kind of a last-minute add yesterday, but I wanted to make sure that we got that in there. Excuse me. Economic development contributions for this year, we have estimated at $266,108. And we expect they, they will go to the bigger groups that we tend to contribute to, C4, the EDC Community Fund. And then we also have the Central Colorado Conservancy. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I got it.
All right. Yay, I win. CSU Extension. And then I did leave a little money in there for miscellaneous contributions. Fireworks, Lake County Civic Center Association, those types of local entities that sometimes do ask. So I left a little money in there for, for those things. Moving on to bigger projects, let's show.
Thank you.
Fire Station Two. It, my understanding that that should be completed in 2022. And we have an estimate of roughly $200,000 that will be spent out in 2022. So I'll continue to look at that a bit more too with Commissioner Marcela and dynamic project manager, I mean project property, project management to see where we're at for 2021 and what we have left over going into 2022. And then what amount of DOLA funds we still have available to us to kind of offset that. So that's kind of what we're looking at. That's what I plugged in for 2022 was 200,000. Will we evaluate that as Commissioner Mutch said, as we move through the next couple of months to work towards finalization? Catback request. I had, mostly what I've seen thus far is from Public Works. I have equipment requests for Roden Bridge. I do not have the total amount here. I apologize. I did not stick that in here. But there, there is a large sum, I would say around 500,000, maybe slightly more, for new equipment. Some items are for the Fleet Shop, as well as I think there was a loader and another piece of equipment. And yeah, so for, for, for those catback requests to see what the impact would be on fund balance, I put those within the Roden Bridge Fund as well as there was a piece of equipment requested for the landfill as well, and that sits in the landfill fund. So if you look at the fund balance summary, you will notice that Roden Bridge, typically if you look at the 2016 through 2020, we hover anywhere between a million and as high as a million seven in 2019. Having those requests in there, and again, this is everything they've asked for, which will change more than likely and determine if it will sit in their fund or if it's something we need to move to catback. Because that does bring their estimated fund balance down to 126,000 and some change there. The landfill fund, having that equipment in there, their fund balance still looks really healthy and appears to be more than, than what we've seen in the history from 16 to 20 that I have on the fund balance summary. So we can, we can work through those numbers more as we go through towards finalization. Overall, fund balance excluding the grant funds for all county funds at this point is estimated at, and I apologize, I'm really blind. I'm going to the eye doctor later. If somebody else would like to read that small number in the corner, I think it's 16. Thank you. And those are, those are the highlights and the points that I have to discuss this morning. So I don't know if there's anything else that Commissioner Marcela would like to add at this time, or do you have any other questions for me?
No, I don't think so, Crystal. I think you did a really great job. I think the only thing we want to add maybe is just those expenditures for the Justice Center. After talking with Crystal yesterday, we've left that as a division by itself. And then if there's grant money that comes in, we'll just pull from that division. But do you have the dollar amounts that you budgeted for the Justice Center project, Crystal?
Yeah, it's 4 million. It's sitting in, yeah, it's sitting as a division under the commissioners. I set up a separate division. And then I will, you know, I can set up, if there's additional grant funding, then I'll set up a revenue line item within that division so that we can track and, and offset those amounts.
Do we, do we currently have that, the anticipated federal funding in there?
I don't think we, I think we're not banking on that until.
I don't know anything about it, so I don't have that in there. There is still the, the DOLA Tier One Grant for the Justice Center that has been ongoing since, I think, towards the end of 2020, maybe early 2021. I can't remember when that one was established. That one will go through 2022, and it sits in the grant funding. I did talk with Katie Walter, and she's estimated that expenditures under that grant will probably be roughly 150,000. The county is responsible for 50% of that. So I did put 75,000 in the grant fund as, as a transfer from the general fund. But the bigger projects, after speaking with Commissioner Marcela, is, will leave that division rather than have it over in the, the grant fund. We will keep it in the general fund and set up that revenue line item as an offset.
Yeah. And I think, Sarah, I know that you and I had talked briefly about that, but I think it makes the most sense to leave it the way Crystal had it set up since it's mostly just county-funded. And, and if we do come across a grant, like if we are successful in the underfunded fund grant application in October, then we can just move money out of that division into the grant fund if there's a match requirement for it.
Sounds good. Yeah. And on that note, I think we'll, we still have the conversation to have on like longer-term strategic funding and on Justice Center project in general. So the goal will be in December to have that included in the budget message and, you know, have, have a longer plan for not just 2022 expenditures. But, all right. Very good. I, I appreciate that overview. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Commissioner Marcela.
Sure. So there's just a couple follow-ups. I think we should try to schedule out a little bit, maybe in the next couple of weeks to kind of nail some things down. In particular, I'll, I'll connect with Colleen on Station Two to make sure that those budget numbers match what she has. And that the contingency, the contingency is appropriate there as well because I think in our weekly calls, we may have a slight increase in the contingency because of the cost of construction materials and, and labor costs because of labor shortages right now. So I'll just make sure that what we put in there is appropriate with her to, and includes the rollover from what is unused in 2021 going into 2022.
Quickly on that, sorry, just quickly on that. So we kept everything. I think we also need to have a discussion with the city on sort of what the city-county breakdown is of any Fire Station Two, you know, additional contingency we put in.
Right, right. And so that was also an additional note that I had written down to have a meeting on is that I'm almost ready to send out a draft of the fire IGA. Since we had let City Council know that we had wanted to renegotiate that IGA to incorporate Station Two operating budget. And so wanted to be sure that we captured in there the repayment agreement between City Council, the fire fund, back to the county since we were putting the bill for, for that project. Sorry.
Okay, I'll blow on it. I'll cool it down.
Sorry, guys. I know how annoyed some people get at my kids.
You're good.
So, so that was actually one thing on my list to schedule was, I don't know if it would be appropriate for us to schedule an executive session for the fire department IGA and budget considerations, maybe with legal, if we wanted to walk through the IGA together, or what your thoughts were on that.
I think that would be great. And I think also, you know, there are other elements of the fire budget, you know, like, you know, salary increases and potentially beginning money into a reserve fund for future equipment, you know, catching up on older equipment. So yes.
Sure. Okay. So do you, so I will, I will email Chris about posting and send out maybe a couple of times for us to meet on that in the next week or so, potentially, if you guys are good with that.
That sounds great.
Okay. I'd like to schedule something too with Roden Bridge and Public Health just because the Roden Bridge fund balance drops so dramatically. Just to, just to kind of talk through some of those things with Michael a little bit. Because the, the fund balance drops like a million dollars going into 2022. And so I think just to have kind of an open conversation with him about that would be really great. So we can wrap our head around it. I'd also really like to, to schedule a conversation with the three of us in Public Health. Because I think that Crystal and I had some questions about the potential transfer into Public Health as well. And maybe any of their grant revenue sources from coronavirus. And then what that looks like for county transfers in and staffing there as well with environmental health. And then I think just for us, maybe we talk through some more of the Justice Center nitty-gritty in that 4 million dollars, kind of planning that out a little bit. And then mine closure, because we didn't put any money into mine closure. And so I'd kind of like an opportunity for us to maybe look at the mine closure fund and the Justice Center and the, and then the, the funds that do take a mill allocation and maybe look at that allocation a little bit and see where we can move things around to get the best bang for our buck. Because I think Human Services has kind of a high fund balance at $700,000. So we might be able to move slightly there or, or think about that a little bit. And then the Sheriff's Office. I really would like to meet with the Sheriff's Office and talk through some revenue projections and staffing, especially with the x-ray machine coming in, like what that, what that actually looks like for us in terms of staffing. So and then I've reached out to the EDC. My was out of town visiting her mom. John from LCCF is open when we'd like to meet. Emily from C4 has reached out to set up a time. And so just want to know how you want to, do you want to block out full days? Do you want to block out hour-long meetings at a time? What would be most efficient for all of us?
I think it probably makes sense to block out mornings or afternoons or a huge chunk and, and have that kind of a little bit fluid so that we can have people join as they're able to.
Yeah, I, I agree. And Amber did, it was a verbal request, which she had talked to you about for, for 30,000, but I couldn't remember what she said it was for. So I just told her, I'm going to plug it in right now for professional services. And so I think a conversation with recreation as well and some of those facilities. And then any other, you know, I don't know any of the other departments that would like to. I like the idea, and I think it worked well in 20, not COVID, pre-COVID, when we blocked out big chunks, once or twice a week. We have roughly eight weeks so that we cover everything and are not making those last-minute changes at midnight. I prefer not to do that again, for sure, if possible.
Yeah. Yeah. I was, I was going to add rec to the list of specific departments to meet with on, I think that's that cost recovery and capital acquisition.
Yes.
Oh, and HR. Kyle, what's wrong?
Well, I think, I think we need to have probably those bigger conversations too about where we want to go with the salaries as well. Right now, they are plugged in off of that worksheet that Hannah provided to you all. So those are the numbers that are in the budget for now. So if we want to look at those and make sure we're in line with, with any steps and whatnot, as well as, once we get through open enrollment, I will be able to update that with the elections. So health benefits will probably change a little bit based on people's elections. And Tim, this is Crystal. I'm sorry you can't see me. But if you would like me to email you a copy of the preliminary budget, I can do that. It will be on the website as well. So, but I could most certainly send that out to you if you'd like.
Sure. Not a problem. Actually, Commissioner Fielder sent it just a little bit ago to me. So you are all good.
You're all set. Go Hugh.
Day is done.
Sorry, just, just quick. So if we could add rec, maybe corner and HR to that list of corners as well. Yeah.
Who, who is the keeper of this list?
I have the list.
Okay. I, maybe a couple of other things that I think, we mentioned housing. We have a placeholder in there that I think is enough for the Housing Director and for the fringe and getting them an office. But I think there's some other things in our ARP spreadsheet that have been requested from the, or, you know, suggested, recommended to us by the Housing Coalition. We should probably look more broadly at our whole housing budget and like what, what we've already spent or allocated. You know, what we think we might get from the 1271 grant. But then there were some other, including some pretty significant numbers for beginning to fill the fund to purchase deed restricted properties. So I think we should probably have like a housing session and make sure we have money in there. I think there are some other ARP things we need to make a decision on, like ARP requests, like food access wastewater. So.
Yeah. So Jeff, oh, sorry, Crystal, I didn't mean to cut you off. So the other thing I had on my list too was the ARPA funds for 2021 or 2022 anyway, to budget for that as well.
Okay, great. And then final thing on my list is I think there, we should maybe just look at what is in that sort of commissioner line item for kind of like future projects. I think, you know, we have a list from that brainstorming we did a few weeks ago that I saw the white, whiteboard sheets in my office. But I think we, we should probably just like talk about, you know, just make sure we have some money in there for sort of like the cost shares of grants we're going to be going for for planning grants and some things like that.
Yeah. And some potential revenue generating endeavors.
Yeah.
Kayla, this is Crystal. Do we need to do a resolution for, for that fund for the ARP dollars since that's set up as a separate fund?
Yeah, we will need to do one. And so I've got a copy of one that I can just write for the, to set up that fund specific to American Rescue Plan. And I can probably have that done for our first November meeting. I just want to make sure I vet it with legal so that the language in there is appropriate for the ARP plant, for the ARP federal program so that it's not, like dollars can be allocated to anything, you know what I mean? So just make sure that the language is, is good.
I will update the summary, the fund balance summary. And then we'll, once we know what the expenditures are, then I will create those, the revenue and expenditure counts under that new fund so that everything will, will show on the summary and the, the revenue and expenditure line by line for the budget.
Awesome.
All right. I think, I think that covers everything for now. And I saw Kayla has already thrown out some calendar invites and dates. So let's get those scheduled and we'll keep moving on. Anything else, big questions before we adjourn?
I don't think so. I, I'll just reach out to, Crystal, I'll reach out to Michael Irwin, Amber, and the sheriff, and Colleen to put them in on some of those times that I've blocked out, if that works for you.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll find out more this afternoon about when my eye surgery will be.
Okay.
But hopefully they do surgeries like on a Friday or something. But I'll let you know as soon as I, as soon as I fang down.
Okay, that sounds good. And I'll just send them emails and, and try to coordinate some times with them for all of us to meet.
Okay, perfect. All right. Another, I guess before, a thought that crossed my mind. Anne Schneider had asked if her and Michael from SCED could present with, to us kind of a preliminary task list or game plan for that. So I'm wondering if maybe that, we have that on the agenda for this coming Monday, and that's part of our kind of diving into budget and numbers with them for a bigger part of the housing piece that I imagine would be our focus with SCED.
Yeah, I think that's listed on the, the presentation from SCED concerning the scope of work and cost analysis regarding housing site analysis.
Yeah.
Does that sound good? And then just while we're on the subject, I guess, I have the MOU with the Attorney General's Office for the opioid settlement on there for Monday. And then do you have other things for Monday?
Do we have the communications agreement?
Yep, I've got that on there.
And just a note to mention the food drive that's going on. Is it to, do we want to look at CCC and CSU engagement or not just yet?
Do you have, do you have like, do you have an MOU from CCC?
On that scope of work in the job description. So it's, it's not a, it's not a professional service, but it's a partnership for that staffing position. So we have, I suppose. No, I don't, I don't think I have an MOU with them.
Okay. Did you want to go through the MOU maybe for CSU? Sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to cut you off.
We were just mumbling about what we did or didn't know. But I think we, and we have a lot of detail from CCC. So I think we have enough to discuss. And I guess that the question is whether we need something, like what do we actually sign or approve?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, yeah, we do have, sorry, Kayla, we have the MOU and. Draft budget from CSU.
So I I mean, I think we can, we can push that to a following meeting if it feels too rushed, but I just wanted to offer that up since it's they've kind of been. Maybe lingering a bit or we're approaching, I think. Being able to make. Some decisions there.
Okay. Well, I think I can commit to. Reviewing the CCC documents that we have so far and being prepared for Monday if you want me to put that on there.
CCC and CSU or?
But let's do both because I think the CSU MOU has been hanging out there for us to get back to them on. So.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so how should I word the CCC? Item on the agenda?
I think Central Colorado Conservancy, consideration of Central Colorado Conservancy. Partnership. In staff.
And cost share.
And cost share. For Lake County staff. Or I guess we shouldn't say Lake County staff because it's not a staff person of Lake County. Here, let me pull up. Sorry.
It's like cost share for CCC's Lake County work.
Consideration of cost share and partnership with Colorado Central Conservancy for Lake County work.
Work. Through or focused on the Conservation District. The Lake County Conservation District.
Okay.
That's listed as to design and implement collaborative. Conservation agriculture programs and manage local and regional conservation district outreach efforts. So it's it's a, I mean, primarily a conservation district. Support person. But we can kind of elaborate on that Monday. I think that'll work, Kayla. Okay. Do I have, do I have if if and that communications agreement potentially? CSU MOU, MOU for opioid, SCAD and CCC.
Those five items, that's all I have on there.
And Patty says she does not have anything additional. So I think that. That looks like it'll do.
Okay, Patty, I will send this back to you since I typed it while while we were talking here. So I'll just send it back to you. With those changes on it.
All right, great.
And then I'll go through and check our calendars and update the planner.
Okay, very good. Yeah, let me know if you need any help on that. I'll. Get this list, put into a Word doc and email body and send it to everybody here as well. And we'll start penciling in conversations. Copy of my my notes that I had for myself.
That would be helpful for me, yeah.
Do you want to send that? Yeah, I have it in Word document. I can give you this copy if it will help you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Awesome. All right. Well, thanks, everybody. Thanks so much for the work, Crystal. All right. So at nine thirty-nine then, we'll adjourn. And our our preliminary budget will be available at the Clerk's Office. And finance. All right.
And online.
And online. All right, we've got three places that we're posting. Fantastic. All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good rest of your Friday and enjoy the weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.